Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for March 5th, 2015. We're going to start now, and I'd like to ask everyone to silence electronic devices, cell phones, laptops, anything that you've got on, you need to put on mute, please. Heather, can you please call the roll?
Tom Grinstead.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Steve Brooks.
Here.
Sarah East Noah.
Here.
All right. So, at the suggestion of another Planning Commissioner, actually, I'm going to take a minute and just briefly explain what the Planning Commission is here for, in general. A lot of you might know already, but for the benefit of anyone who's going to watch this later on the Internet. So, the Planning Commission is a seven-member-appointed body by the mayor, and we review legislative and quasi-judicial actions in the city, like rezones, comprehensive plan amendments, things like that. We also occasionally review specific projects in certain circumstances where the zoning designation requires that, and we just make a recommendation. We do not make -- we're not a decision-making body. We are a recommending body. And so, that's just a kind of a brief intro for anyone who's not completely familiar with our role. So, I think our next item will be approval of previous meeting's minutes. There are none, so we'll move right through that and go into the public comment period. The public comment period is an opportunity for anyone here to talk about anything they want, other than the item on tonight's agenda, which is the public meeting on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update. So, if you want to talk about anything else at all, now's your chance. Three minutes, you can come down, address us, address the public, be on TV, and say what you have to say. Okay. Doesn't look like anyone is interested. We're just waiting for a few people to filter in. Okay, so, no one's interested, so we're going to move forward to the public meeting. And the public meeting tonight is on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update, and we're going to start with staff introduction. Presentation by Chris. Just real quick before that, though, this is not a public hearing tonight. This is a public meeting. So, we're going to get a staff presentation, and then we're going to give the public the opportunity to make a comment, and their public's still going to have that opportunity, but this is not the formal public hearing, which will be held later on, after we've had public comments, staff's had a chance to meet with focus groups again, and then it'll come back to us for a public hearing. So, just to clarify for everyone. So, Chris, you want to take it away?
Actually, I'll start, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to everyone for coming out. We're having a conversation -- we're beginning a conversation about accessory dwelling units in Bellingham, and we're reviewing our now twenty-year-old accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we're in the information gathering stage. So, we're meeting with various folks, various groups, getting information about people's experiences with ADUs, their concerns, their issues, identify the benefits, and so forth. This is really just a conversation at this point. As you said, Mr. Chairman, this is not a hearing. There's no proposal at this point. We're just gathering information. We will come back at some point with a specific proposal for potentially changes to our existing ordinance. When that happens, folks will be able to come and make their feelings known in a more formal way. This is intended to be an informal kind of discussion tonight. Chris is going to give a brief presentation. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Chris Cook from our staff. I'm Greg Ockett from the Planning Department. Chris is going to give a brief presentation, and then, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we'll open it up for comments from the folks that are here. We also got some great written comments, and I think you all got copies of them. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. Chris?
All right. Thank you, Greg. So, just so you know, since this is going on the Internet and such, we have created a web link for this accessory dwelling unit ordinance update. If you go to the city's website, www.cob.org, go to the search bar, just type in "ADU ordinance update," and it will take you straight to the web link for the update. And that web link provides information, both links to the Planning Commission materials and also materials from other jurisdictions, how they regulate accessory dwelling units, as well as other publications related to accessory dwelling units. So, I'm going to cover the following topics: What is being considered for update? What is an accessory dwelling unit? Existing standards? Why are we reviewing this now? And the next steps. So, this updated intends to analyze the current regulations for attached and detached accessory dwelling units, including the prospect of allowing detached accessory dwelling units in single-family zones. What is an accessory dwelling unit? An accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, is a small self-contained residential unit that contains its own bathroom, kitchen, and sleeping area on the same lot as an existing single-family home. So, it's basically a fully self-supporting dwelling unit, and it's subordinate to primary residents on-site. So, the city allows attached and detached ADUs. There's different regulations for each, but there are several common regulations. I'll cover the common ones first here, so I don't have to repeat them. So, for both attached and detached accessory dwelling units, ADUs are only allowed in conjunction with single-family homes. Only one ADU is allowed per single-family home. The maximum size is forty percent of the existing home, or eight hundred square feet, whichever is less. There are exceptions to this, but I won't go into the details there. They do require that the owner live on-site, and a covenant of owner occupancy is required to be recorded on the property, and the city verifies owner occupancy every odd number So, going to the standards that are unique to attached accessory dwelling units. Attached accessory dwelling unit ordinance was adopted in 1995. It allow -- attached units are allowed in all zones that allow residential uses, except in the Lake Wacom watershed. They are limited to a maximum of two bedrooms, maximum of three occupants, and they require one parking stall per bedroom. Next is detached accessory dwelling units. Unique standards to that. That ordinance was adopted in 2009 as part of the infill toolkit. They are prohibited in single-family zones, also in neighborhood commercial zones and the Lake Wacom watershed. There are some exceptions. Again, I won't go into the details. They are allowed in other zones that allow residential uses, so multifamily zones and other zones, other commercial zones that allow multifamily uses. There's some additional size limitations for them. There's a maximum five hundred square foot limit per floor, and a .5 floor area ratio on the property as a whole. So, floor area ratio is ratio of the size, the square footage of a building, to the size of a lot. They have height limits. Height is -- must be less than or equal to the primary residence, and no more than twenty-five feet, whichever is more restrictive. There's locational criteria. The property must have alley access, or the lot must be a corner lot, or it must be at least ten thousand square feet in size. And detached accessory dwelling units require one parking stall per unit. Now, the attached and detached accessory dwelling, there are two separate ordinances, codified in two separate sections of the code. As part of the update, we will be consolidating it into one section of the code for user-friendliness. Why are we reviewing this now? The 1995 ADU ordinance requires review of the existing ordinance upon issuance of the 200 ADU permit, or before any specific neighborhood exceeds 20 ADUs. The South Hill neighborhood is at that limit right now. They have -- actually have eighteen approved, and two are being processed right now. Otherwise, citywide, ninety-three have been approved, seventy-seven of which have been This is a map showing where those ninety-three ADUs plus three pending are located, and so you can see they're fairly well scattered, except for the concentration in the South Hill neighborhood in this area. So, this is where there are basically twenty ADUs at this time. Another reason why we're reviewing this now is emerging demographics. Baby boomers began retiring in 2011, and they will continue to be retiring in increasing numbers for the next twenty years. Study by AARP indicates that nearly eighty percent would prefer to age in place. So, that is to say, they want to remain in their homes, in the neighborhoods where they raised their family. ADUs provide a means for them to do that, such that if they should choose to build an ADU, they could rent out that ADU to supplement for supplemental retirement income, or they can live in the ADU and rent out the home for supplemental retirement income. Also, that ADU could be used for caregiver residence, so that they can have the caregiver live on-site, and they don't have to move to a care facility. Also, it allows for extended families, so that a young family can be living in the main residence, and their in-laws can live in the ADU, and that can function, in many ways, also as caregiver-type of situation. Another demographic is a percent of single-person households in Bellingham is thirty-five percent. That is to say, that thirty-five percent of all households in Bellingham are occupied by just one person. And so, ADUs are a very attractive housing choice for that demographic. Another reason why we're reviewing this now is adoption of the rental registration program. Under this program, we are mandated to have all rental units registered. It is staffed, and it is funded. It is anticipated that a number of illegal dwelling units will be identified as this program gets developed, and adopting an ADU ordinance will provide -- or updating the ADU ordinance will provide a tool to help bring illegal units into compliance. And so, if we were to -- basically, if the rental registration program was adopted first, and then we wait for the ADU ordinance, it creates a situation of limbo for the illegal units and how -- what their potential options are. So, our next steps. On February 20th, we conducted a focus group meeting. It was made up of various members from neighborhood associations and housing professionals. That group was tasked with identifying opportunities and issues associated with accessory dwelling units. Copy of that report is in the Planning Commission staff report, and we're asking Planning Commission to review the focus group summary and solicit public comment to identify additional points to be added, also to identify those issues and opportunities that the Commission wants staff to explore more fully and bring back for consideration, and to identify preliminary approaches to regulating ADUs that the Commission wants staff to explore and bring back for consideration. Also attached in that packet, and there's copies down in the front here for the public, there's a matrix in there that was put together by the SiteLine Institute, and it shows how various other jurisdictions regulate ADUs. And it basically scores it. You know, ignore the name of the table. It's called the ADU Gauntlet, but it basically provides a scoring mechanism of how friendly or not friendly jurisdictions are to allowing ADUs. In my review of that, there's no clear scoring mechanism, how they came to those scores. They don't reveal how they came to those scores, but in reviewing that, I estimate that Bellingham would achieve a score of between forty and fifty. So, that completes my presentation. Are there any comments at this, or any questions at this time?
Garrett? Can you go back on those slides at all?
Yeah.
On the detached ADU units, so, those are only permitted in multifamily zones, not single-family zones for the --
They're only allowed in zones that allow multifamily development. So, there's commercial zones that allow multifamily development, they're allowed there also.
Oh, okay, okay. Is there a requirement for owner occupancy for the detached ADUs?
Yes. That's part of the summary of what's common to both. Owner occupancy is common to both. They both require a covenant of owner occupancy, and the city verifies that occupancy every odd year.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Steve? Steve?
If I'm correct, you said that illegal ADUs presently out there in the city will be identified through the rental registration program. Is that correct?
We anticipate there's going to be a number of them identified through that program. We don't know that all of them will be, but, you know, it's mandating that all rental units be registered in the city. You know, not everybody's probably going to come forward, and so, there will be those that will be found out through our, you know, registration program, and then probably others that, you know, we receive complaints on. If they don't come forward, we receive complaints. We enforce on complaints.
Who would respond to a complaint?
We would -- we have an enforcement officer.
So, there'd be no -- there are no other plans, other than either somebody volunteering the information on a neighbor, or the rental registration program? That is the only two ways, right now, that we've got planned to identify these illegal units. Is that correct?
I don't have the answer to all the means that we will be looking for those rental units.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. So, unless there's any Commissioners with additional comments at this time, I think we should move forward and allow the public an opportunity to comment. So, we'll open the public meeting to the public. I have a list of people who've signed up, and I'll call names, and when we get through that list, if anyone else wants to talk, you're more than welcome to. You don't have to sign up. So, when we get through that list, if you haven't heard your name called, and you want to say something, just come on down to the sidewall, and then you can come up. When you make a comment, please include your name and address, just for the record, and we're going to limit comments to four minutes tonight for each speaker, and I would ask that everyone, please, respect that. I'll probably give you a heads-up when you're around thirty seconds left, so you know. We have another opportunity for public comment, and we want to make sure that everyone has the same opportunity, so just try and keep your comments to four minutes. And we'll get started. And first on the list is Jeff Midaw.
My name is Jeff Midaw. I live in the South Hill neighborhood. I wanted to thank the Planning Commission and the new Planning Director for taking on this project. I sent out some comments to all of you this afternoon, a couple of days ago. I hope you got a chance to get them, and I'm not going to just read them to you, but I wanted to emphasize a few things. The South Hill neighborhood wasn't able to attend the focus group, but we looked at the comments, and I think this is a good start. The comments I made with my wife identified my personal situation, our bad experience we had with ADUs when we moved here ten years ago, and I'm glad to see that the city is addressing this topic, because we think that the ordinance is broke, and it's -- we need to take the opportunity to fix it. We think it needs fixing by making it up-to-date and inclusive to the current large number of so-called illegal units, and we have some thoughts. First of all, we want the city to be fair. Allow people to legalize what they have been using legally, some for up to fifty years, without paying ridiculous fees or costly billing requirements, as long as they have adequate parking. I don't know what the city did in 1995 with the ordinance in terms of getting people to legalize their unit, but whatever they did, didn't work, in my opinion. So, historically, when people get away with not getting a permit, and those who do get a permit are punished by high costs and time delays, there's no incentive to follow the law. The city should provide either the incentives or the penalties to make this updated ordinance work. We prefer incentives, but there has to be a penalty for noncompliance, other than not doing anything. Third, provide for a way, some administrative process, to legally establish an ADU, no matter when it was created, so that it can meet the conditions necessary for health, safety, and welfare of a neighborhood, and adequate parking. Parking, parking, parking needs to be adequate. If the parking problem can't be resolved by having adequate spaces and access, an ADU should not be approved. Please do not allow blocking driveways, or allow on-street or yard parking to allow or allow creating a hazardous situation for neighbors by blocking emergency vehicles, and this is especially true in the South Hill, where we have small alleys and steep slopes. Provide a mechanism for having a second kitchen for caregivers, or truly mother-in-law situations. And that was our situation that we had the bad experience with. Don't make people who have a caregiver in their home in a living situation a zoning infraction. The elderly should have this option as they grow older, and this is not something that the city needs to regulate. And I notice that I look at myself, and all of a sudden, that applies to me, and scares me. Keep the owner-argument requirement that a home with an ADU requires the owner to live in it. I didn't realize you checked it every year. I don't think that works, but if this requirement is dropped, because all houses with ADUs will become duplexes or multi-resident units, and the neighborhood character is lost. That's very, very important. If the city is obsessed with infill, as it probably should be, allow neighborhoods to get credit for the large number of unknown ADUs, and eliminate the cap on the number of existing units. If you don't know how many units you have, how do you know how many you shouldn't have? The cap makes no sense to me.
Thirty seconds here, Jeff.
Integrate the enforcement of ADUs with the enforcement of the new apartment inspection program, so there is no differentiation between an ADO and an apartment, in terms of health, safety, and welfare. And did we mention parking? So, let the neighborhoods be the arbitrator, at least have the biggest input as to what defines their neighborhood character in this process, and we're glad to see this is a work in progress. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. I'd like to -- I appreciate everyone's support for his comments, but we'd like to ask people not to clap or show any emotions after speakers -- well, show any overt emotions, like clapping or booing, or any comments like that when speakers speak. We have to maintain fairness for everybody, so appreciate that. And next up is Derek Long, and then Lisa Anderson, and then Ann Mackey.
Thank you. Derek Long, 1510 J Street. I have a bit of history with this issue of ADUs and other housing forms inside the city of Bellingham. As Executive Director of Sustainable Connections, I've had the opportunity over the last ten years to be on the county-wide Affordable Housing Task Force, the more recent City of Bellingham Affordable Housing Work Group. I was in on the ADU focus group discussion just a week or two ago. I also monitored very closely discussions by the Community Health Improvement Plan creators that touched on health and its relationship to the built environment. In addition, Sustainable Connections probably hosted twenty different educational events for the public and the industry professionals on smart growth issues over the last six or eight years. I noticed that, at least my copy of the packet tonight, is incomplete. If you look at page three, you'll see that the topic is concerns and issues that the focus group came up with, but we also had a very robust discussion and good notes covered on the opportunities that ADUs present. And so, when I look at these notes, they're incomplete. They don't talk about the pros, and I'm a strong believer that if we're going to have a good discussion about growth and ADUs in this community, we have to have a solid understanding of both the pros and the cons, the opportunities and the concerns. I don't know if it's just my copy, but I only see the concerns. So, I'll take this opportunity to talk about some of the pros, from my perspective, and I think others as well. And I'll talk about those pros in terms of people, planet, and the economy. And when I think about people, and I'm not going to be able to talk about all the pros, but when I think about people, I think of the compelling work in the study of the Community Health Improvement Plan group that studied the built environment and its relationship to human health. And basically, what they discovered is that the closer we give people an opportunity for high-quality housing, the closer it is to where they work and shop and play and study, the healthier they are. This is just, quite simply, less time in a car means better health, and I think we're fans in this community of good health. In addition, the more good living opportunities we provide people inside the city of limits, the more great opportunities we have for more frequent transit and so on, better parks. And on the -- under the planet heading, I've studied this a lot, that the more good housing opportunities we give people close to where they work, shop, play, and study, the lower the greenhouse gas emissions. It's less time in the car, more choices available for people to get around. They can walk, they can bike. So, ADUs play an important part in helping people reduce their greenhouse gas emissions, less driving, less pollution. And then, on the topic of the economy, more neighbors, and there's a lot to love about neighbors, means, you know, if they're building small ADUs, that means they're small builders doing high-quality jobs of building small homes, right, in our neighborhoods. Those are good jobs and good, small businesses that we want to support. In addition, that more neighbors mean more people that can walk to support businesses in the neighborhoods, right? In my case, I live in J Street. There's a multifamily mixed-use building going on the corner of J and Dupont that was a little bit controversial among my neighbors, and I talked about these issues of why I think more neighbors might be good for our neighborhood, in terms of environment, economy, and --
About thirty seconds, Derek.
Thank you. Social benefit. And so, you know, in my neighborhood, the Fountain Bistro just closed. They didn't quite have the customer flow they needed, right? Well, there are twenty-one new units going, and four doors down from my house. I want those neighbors there, and I want ADUs nearby, and we're in a dense neighborhood in the Leonard Streets. And the Elizabeth Station's been what a winner, you know, but Elizabeth Station doesn't win if we don't have enough neighbors nearby that business in order to support it. And so, I thank you, the Planning Commission and Planning Department, for taking on this important issue. It's not easy. I'm not advocating for the Wild West or anything like that, but I do feel, in order to have a meaningful discussion about this, we should be really clear on all the potential benefits, as well as the negatives, like parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, if I may, the opportunities and benefits are on page two in the staff report. I think Derek was too anxious to see what was deep in the report. He overlooked that.
But it is online.
Yes.
It's online.
It is online.
Sorry, Derek. You're correct.
Good evening. Lisa Anderson from York Neighborhood, representing the board, and for the first part, and then I'll talk a little bit about my personal view. We submitted a letter to you, so I'm not going to read it, but I do want to point out a few of the main points for folks who might not get online and read the letter. We think it's very important, as we go forward and look at ADUs and possibly rewriting these codes, that -- a few of the main points for folks who might not get online and read the letter. We think it's very important, as we go forward and look at ADUs, and possibly rewriting these codes, that we continue with the owner-occupied requirement. I think that is just essential in order to be able to possibly increase the density that will help reduce some of the problems that could come with high density in some of our already small congested neighborhoods. There is a concern that, you know, it's kind of a joke, to be honest, that, you know, in the York Neighborhood, it shows on the map that we have three ADUs. I personally have three ADUs within a stone's throw of my house, and they're not listed on that map. We all know that there are a lot of illegal ADUs within Bellingham. So the concern is, is how that's going to be addressed adequately, not just for the neighborhoods having to police and submit names. I do encourage that there's some kind of survey where someone goes out and, you know, either meets with the neighborhoods and go through, or walk, or, you know, take a look. It's pretty obvious what garages have been converted. I would like to suggest, I mean, it feels, I understand why we're trying to get this in, so that it could be addressed before the inspection comes, but in some ways, it feels like the cart is before the horse. I think the inspections will identify quite a few of these. I would like to see this, you know, we'd like to see this written into the comp plan as part of that process, too, so that we really have adequate time to go through and review everything, because I do think it's a broad issue that affects every neighborhood, and every neighborhood will be different. So on a personal side, I would like to, besides the inspections, I would like to know a little bit more about the data when someone comes forward and says that, you know, here's the matrix, and I don't know what the research was to rate, whether something was friendly or unfriendly, but we might be 40% or 50%. I think good research is really important. If data's going to be presented, that may sway an opinion, so I would encourage finding out that information. I personally would like to see it, because I do believe in good research. Parking is a huge issue, so I do believe that if there's not enough parking for an additional ADU, it should not be granted. I don't think there should be a grandfather in at this point. There was the opportunity a few years back, where people could come forward, have their plans looked at, be grandfathered in. A lot of people did not take advantage of that, so I would discourage an opportunity like that again. The opportunity was there. And I would like to see more information on when these illegal ADUs are identified, what is going to actually happen with them. And then I would also like to have more information, or something pretty clear and spelled out, what are going to be the repercussions when an owner is not occupying a supposedly owner-occupied ADU? Because I think we need some level of enforcement. That's why we are kind of plagued with tons of ADUs in our neighborhoods, is because there really hasn't been an enforcement. We have been able to go to the city and say, "We have this problem," and the response has been, "We don't really have the staffing or the enforcement. We have two enforcement people, and they're incredibly busy dealing with everything else." When I complain about litter, it's like I have 185 places to take a look at before I can go take a look at your neighborhood. So we really do need to make sure that we have the resources, so that when something is identified, we're going to be able to pursue it, so that it's not a continued joke, that, you know, if I don't report it, my neighbor likes me, and they don't report it, I'm going to continue to be able to rent out two units and get a lot of money, and not pay the city the correct fees in order to support this density. The last thing is, I would like to see this as part of the density. If we're just looking at it as, when I get old, I'm going to have my daughter come in and live with me, that's one thing, but actually, there's a lot of people living in these ADUs, and if it does not go towards looking at the density within the neighborhood, then we're really kind of portraying, not only to ourselves and the city, but to the state, a false perception about how dense our neighborhoods actually are.
Thank you, Lisa. Ann Mackey is next, and then Eric Scott and Morgan Care, it looks like.
Thank you. My name is Ann Mackey, and I live at 1351 Humboldt Street, New York Neighborhood. And just last month, I attended the Planning Commission public hearing about the Affordable Housing Incentive Amendment, and just a few weeks later, I'm here again tonight for the discussion about the ADUs. And these, along with the subdivision ordinance, which you had a public hearing in January, which I also attended, are important housing initiatives that the city is moving forward. We talk about aging in place, and I personally feel like I'm going to be doing that in this room this year. I'm relieved to hear the Planning Department, Greg Otte-Cott, say that we're in the information gathering stage, and we're just looking at what other jurisdictions have done, and that we're opening up this conversation for neighborhood perspective. And I want to just say, to share with you, in 1995, when the ordinance was passed, I was the president of the York Neighborhood Association. I have 20 years of looking at accessory dwelling unit issues, and enforcement, lack of enforcement, land use zoning, and neighborhood planning in York. And, you know, on the one hand, the community is invited to participate in the upcoming city-hosted open house on the comprehensive plan, and on the other hand, we're caught scrambling, as neighborhood associations, to keep up with this rapid-fire timeline of these critical issues that are coming at us so fast, all before we've had a chance to really sit down as a community and have a collaborative exchange of how we want our community to grow, and how we want to go through this process of change. I'm going to say the cliche that Lisa just mentioned, the putting the cart before the horse. If the horse is the overhaul community plan for how we want to preserve neighborhood character, while accommodating anticipated population growth, and if the cart is loaded with the many planning elements that help to make that happen, such as affordable housing, and transportation planning, pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods, historic preservation, and preservation of green space, then we need to stop and first, feed the horse, groom the horse, and make sure the horse is ready for the journey. The horse is the community's acceptance of a new comprehensive plan, and the horse is the buy-in from the neighborhoods, businesses, and government entities that we want to achieve a common goal. First, we need an educational opportunity, so we can learn about planning and land use. I've been kind of absorbed in it in my neighborhood, but I can tell you, brand-new people come on our board, and they go, "Planning? What?" You know, it's a foreign language. It still is to me, as well. Second, we need to collectively do the work to figure out the plan, and jumping ahead with these critical rule changes, and they are rule changes, for subdivisions, accessory dwelling units, and affordable housing, which is really, affordable, the Affordable Housing Initiative is really huge zoning changes, filled with density increases for neighborhoods, rules for setback changes, rules for parking allotments being dismissed or reduced. This is putting the cart before the horse. On a personal level, I may be partial to these initiatives. As a senior, I am certainly interested in aging in place, and I'm not talking about in this room. And perhaps I am open to looking at how zoning regulations should be changed to make that possible for me. I'm also fully aware of how some of the current rules have been ignored by some of the property owners, and it might appear ignored by our enforcement systems.
About 30 seconds, Ann.
Okay. So I just want to say that, you know, I support doing a count of the actual ADUs that we have in our neighborhoods, legal and illegal by neighborhood. I, like Lisa, can, you know, throw a baseball and hit three on my alley from my deck, or my husband could throw it that far. We need to determine the numbers that do not have owner occupancy on the premise, and I believe that's our big, huge conundrum. We all know that. That's the giant elephant in the room. And we need to determine how many were originally grandfathered in during the first moratorium in 95, and when the city passed the original ordinance, and we need to determine whether or not the construction of these units ever were permitted by the city. So there's a lot we don't know. What we do know is that many, many are illegal, and few are owner-occupied. And that's the number-one qualification for them being legal, is that they be owner-occupied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Eric Scott?
Hello, Eric Scott, Birchwood Neighborhood. Not used to talking to a microphone, so pardon me. A few comments on the ADUs. ADUs can eventually ruin a neighborhood, as they have in many areas of Seattle. They're called mother-in-law apartments down there, and yet I don't think many mother-in-laws are living there. Homeowners, of course, are motivated by a little extra income. Many are inspired by the real estate moguls, and many Donald Trump like to be. The city benefits by packing in more people. The benefits, the benefits to the neighborhood and to the environment are a farce, okay? It is not sustainable. You cannot sustain dividing and dividing and dividing. Once you divide it once, how many times can you divide that? So you cannot sustain that. It's not sustainable. Once you pack in more people and densify an area, you're not pulling in people from the outside, you're just bringing in more people. It is population growth that ruins the environment, not, you don't densify that to save the environment. There's no one-for-one. You don't save land out in the county by building more units in the city. The jobs are not sustainable. You can only build a house once. ADUs essentially circumvent zoning laws. If it looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So it's, you're simply creating multifamily housing in single-family zoning. That's circumventing that zoning, whether it's attached or detached. You have two families living in one structure, that's multifamily. You have two houses living on one lot, that's multiple houses. ADUs create the dreaded multifamily housing that nobody wants to live around, certainly not any politician, or real estate developer, or anybody of the more elite class. The attached ADUs, like I said, more than one family and one distinct unit, so it's circumventing the zoning laws. Turns the owner-occupied neighborhood to rentals. Those of us that bought our homes, we worked very hard to get into a normal neighborhood with owner-occupied houses. That's very important. There's a pride in ownership. When you don't have that ownership, you don't take care of it. Now I'll talk about attached versus detached ADUs. Attached ADUs, and only if their primary home is occupied by the owner, the renters will be better, you hope, a little more respectful, cleaner, quieter. No homeowner would want to share a structure with a bad renter. You can hear their noise, feel their doors slamming, and smell their cigarette smoke, and the new marijuana smoke now. Detached ADUs would be built as far away from the owner's house as possible, and as close to their neighbors as possible. They would want to maximize their own privacy. This is all for the benefit of the primary homeowner, not for the benefit of the neighborhood.
About 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Much less incentive to bill to choose good renters. This could ruin the quiet backyards of three to four homes, people that worked hard to have a nice, quiet backyard, and put a lot of work and passion in their home and their yards. The renters will be a problem. Rentals in general create a depreciated neighborhood. The renters' attitude is, "It's just a rental." They don't care of it, they put little in as possible. Landlord's attitude is, "It's just a rental." They put little in as possible. It's just an investment. They want to cash out sometime. So the rentals become shabby and ugly, and I have two within our home to look at. So ADUs greatly can detract from the neighbors' homes, especially the immediate neighbors. They devalue their hard work and their responsible living. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Morgan, it looks like Morgan Care, I'm sorry if I pronounced the last name wrong. Morgan?
Not Morgan. Is Morgan here?
Looks like Morgan's not here. We've got Andrew Goode, I'm sorry, and then Lucas Phillips, and then Anna Goad. You don't want to? Do we have Andrew Goode here? Do you want to speak? No? Okay. Lucas Phillips?
Uh, not relevant.
Nope. Okay. So we're going to move on to Harriet Spinell. Fourth time is the charm.
Thank you. I am Harriet Spinell, and I live at 903 Liberty Street. I agree with many of the comments that were given by Ann and Lisa. I live in Seehome Neighborhood. I live in the single-family portion, which is land-wise, I don't know, maybe a third the size of the whole neighborhood, and most of mine, Seehome, is multifamily. When the registration was done in 95, I also, you can look at the map for Seehome, and you will see there are two that are registered. They're in the multifamily section. They're not in the single-family. And from my house, I think in about a three-block-by-five-block area, there are probably 10 to 15 illegals, and you go a little bit further, and there are more. These are detached. They're not even attached, and they're not owner-occupied. There may be a couple that are owner-occupied in the main house, but most are not. In checking the records for your taxes, it's always very interesting, it doesn't show improvements on the ones I've checked. And so that means they probably didn't have a permit, they're not on the tax rolls. I think the other portion of the cost to the city is utilities. I pay a water bill, and that part, most of my water bill goes to the watershed fund. And if you have multi-residents and multi-units on one lot, you're not really paying your share. I think that was set up so we'd make sure we have clean water in the future, and so if you have one unit getting a lot, they're not really paying their share. And so the city's losing out on money, I think, too. But parking was mentioned earlier. Parking is probably the most crucial thing. The older neighborhoods that are seeing the brunt of the illegals, it's narrow streets, there's not that much parking, and if you take up the, if a garage is converted, that means the driveway, everything, and so parking is lost. And several of the units around in my area, they're using, you know, if it's a corner, the grassy part off the road, because there's no sidewalk, but it's street parking, and that takes up quite a bit of space, if you have four or five people living in one unit, and then you have the extra unit behind. I think the thing that was mentioned is the thing, you better know how many there are out there before you even make any decisions, because I think you will find, there are far more than the numbers that Chris showed you, and just the examples of York and Seehome will tell you that. I think, you know, with growth management, yes, there was a mandate to have more density. But along with that, in later legislation, there was also the mandate to make sure you retain the character of your neighborhoods, including single-family. And if you start allowing detached, in particular, all over town and in single-family, then you have to make the decision, do we believe in single-family zoning, or do we not? Because it's not single-family anymore, if you have, you know, two units for every lot. And especially when you're talking about very small lots. In my area, we're about 6,500 square feet, but in some parts of town, they are much smaller than that, when they're only the 45 wide, instead of 55. So there's decisions to make there, and I think that's why looking at the whole comprehensive plan for the future is very important, and not just this as one little piece. It's a piece, but it can't be looked at in isolation. The other thing I just want to mention is, I value my green space. I have to have green, and I think everybody does. And probably one of the biggest failures in Bellingham is, we are building more and more units downtown, and we don't have a park for people. more units downtown, and we don't have a park for people. And I think the same thing goes for neighborhoods. Many neighborhoods don't have a small park in their area, and so when you crowd a lot of residences in, you lose even more green space. And that's, I don't know, that's a mental thing for me. Anyway, I don't think there should be a grandfathering in of those, you know, post-'95, something that was been in place for 50 years and is attached, that's different in my mind. But if somebody's supposed to have registered, and they didn't, and they were illegal in the first place because they were detached instead of attached, I don't see any reason that they should now be given the go-ahead, just because they put a few thousand dollars into a garage to make it an income property. So I'll probably have more to say later.
Thank you very much.
But thank you for listening.
Okay, so next up are James and Kirsten Alley. Would they like to speak? Nope? Okay. Then Paul Schisler. And then that's the last name on the list. So anyone else who'd like to speak after Paul, just please go ahead and line up over against the wall. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Paul Schisler. I live in the Ferryville neighborhood, down near Ethan Wilson. Our neighborhood has a mix of multifamily and single-family. It's been an interesting place for me to live for 30 years now. I've been active in the neighborhood, and I've also been following issues around housing planning and affordability in particular since the '80s, back when the city appointed an Affordable Housing Task Force in the late '80s, early '90s, when prices were going crazy. And I was on the Countywide Housing Affordability Task Force a few years back. I helped to get Colshuk Community Land Trust started and served as its director for the first 10 years. So now I'm an independent contractor, and I still work on housing affordability issues. First, I'd like to echo what a number of people have said already. I'd encourage the city to go slow or go slower, to allow time for some of these issues to be worked out, issues like design review or not, parking minimums, grandfathered units or not. But I did want to speak in favor of finding a way to accommodate more neighbors within existing fully serviced urban land, like my own neighborhood, where I think detached ADUs might be allowed, thanks to the Urban Village Plan that was recently adopted. But most neighborhoods don't allow detached ADUs yet. Our neighborhood, including residents nearby me, thought that that would be worth trying, and so we'll see how it goes. But there is a good reason to go slow. The Housing, the Rental Registration and Inspection Program that probably will be adopted by the city will call for all legal ADUs to register, and maybe staff could answer why this ordinance being adopted prior to that would make a difference. I think we could still expect anyone with an ADU to register, whether or not we update the code on ADUs right away. On the other hand, I would like to see the city figure out with community support how to accommodate more people within existing fully serviced neighborhoods in a way that doesn't cause noise and doesn't cause too much traffic, and actually can be a graceful welcome addition to the neighborhood and the tax base and the utility customers. And if we wanted to focus some of this development on homes that would be relatively affordable, we could do that. The owner-occupant could choose to rent at a price that would be affordable to certain target incomes, and even at 60% of area median income rents plus basic utilities might be what people were charging anyway. So if you're going to charge that amount anyway, and it's affordable for a modest-income household, then it helps the city meet its targets for affordability. And if an owner-occupant agreed to do that longer term, then there's a way to pay the impact fee and utility hookup charges that the city might want to charge. If you add a dwelling, as Harry just mentioned, there's an impact on utility systems and everything else, and maybe it's appropriate to think about, impact fees and utility hookup charges for each additional dwelling, just like any other development needs to pay. But if it's in the affordability range that the city targets, there's a funding source that can pay those fees, so it's not a hurdle for the developer. And then I'd like to quickly mention a third thing. If you think about it, what you're doing is adding the right to develop another unit on existing lots throughout the city, and there's a value to that. An appraiser could tell you what that might be worth. Adding almost the equivalent of a full development right to an existing parcel is a very valuable thing. When the county talks about purchasing development rights back from farmland owners, the appraisers look at the value of the land before the development right is removed and the value of the land after the development rights are removed. And you'd be interested to hear that the average cost the county has paid over the last 10 years is well over $40,000. Recently, with the market being soft, the price has been more like $20,000 to $25,000 per development right when you try to buy them back. There's one large farm, 160 acres. The appraiser said with the development right removed would be $4,000 an acre less in value. So one development right in that farm's case is $255,000 for one development right. So these development rights are very valuable. I don't know how that factors into the way the city grants development rights and gives away that value, but I think it's the community creating that value and the community giving away that value, and it's appropriate to think about what's the quid pro quo, or what should a property owner do in return for that gift of value. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So anyone else who didn't sign up who'd like to speak, please just come up one at a time and, you know, give us your name and address and your thoughts.
Jeanette Kaiser, 1504 Washington Street in Bellingham, Washington. I'm with the Columbia Neighborhood Association, and I am the MNAC rep for that neighborhood association. I've had many conversations with a lot of folks that are associated with neighborhoods, both just residents and then people who work on the boards. And I can say that in my conversations, I have yet to hear anybody who is against a permitted ADU, but we're not having that conversation. We're having a conversation about illegal units, and the reason is the lack of compliance and the inability of enforcement of the city. And to date, I have not seen anything that satisfies my concern about how that will be resolved. Rental registration is a good first step. How long will that take to be implemented? And how will that actually resolve this issue? And what are the consequences? How will you solve the city's staffing issues whenever it comes to compliance? And so I guess I'm here to talk about the elephant in the room, and that is the illegal units. It's preventing us from having an educated conversation about permitted ADUs. And until the city puts forward something that helps us resolve this issue, I don't think we're going to get very far. There isn't, in my mind, there aren't really good tracks of, and it's been talked about quite a bit, so I don't want to belabor it, but where are these units on the housing inventory? How do we account for all of these people? And how does that comport with how we're solving our obligation to find homes in Bellingham? And what maybe hasn't been mentioned is a lot of these units don't even have addresses. And the issue with emergency services and police, fire, emergency EMS, I don't think we can walk past that. So I guess what I'm here to say is, I agree with everything that's been said, but I implore you to come up with some solutions, good, credible solutions, that can put people at ease about how the city will step forward before we even try to figure out permitted ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's David Cunningham. I live in 2942 Birchwood, 2942 McLeod in the Birchwood neighborhood. And really, a lot of people have said many of the things that I want to talk about, but there are a couple of things about the Birchwood neighborhood in particular that I think are really important. We have a character in that neighborhood that is different than almost any other neighborhood in Bellingham, and that is that we have the Victory Garden lots. And that's very important to many of us. We moved there because of that. And the idea of detached ADUs, pretty much, I can just imagine either one of my neighbors having a detached ADU would look right over into my backyard in a way that you might not have in a, on a smaller lot where they have to build it up closer to the main house. So I'm a little concerned about how detached ADUs would work in our neighborhood and still preserve the character of that neighborhood. The other thing that's a character of our neighborhood is we have no gutters or sidewalks. And consequently, we have people walking on the street. We have a lot of traffic on our particular section of McLeod Road, which is between Northwest and Maplewood, and people have to get off onto the grass. We don't, when we've got buses coming by, we've got a bunch of problems with traffic right now, since they built that roundabout on Northwest. But one of the issues, really, in terms of the quality of our neighborhood is we like the rural quality, and we start densifying it in the way that detached ADUs would densify it, it's going to really change the quality of our neighborhood. Right now, I have a rental unit next door, which I'm sure is not registered, and I have a rental unit across the street, which I know is not registered, and an illegal ADU across the street. Now, the city has come by and done some enforcement work on the illegal ADU, but I'm not confident that it's going to change the situation very much in the long run unless the city is able to come back and really follow up on a rare, something more than every other year basis to make sure that that is still owner-occupied and that it's either made legal or it has the qualities like pass-through from one unit to the other, interior pass-through, to make it legal and no stove and refrigerator. So I agree with a lot of other people who've talked about, the problems are mostly about illegal units. And I don't, actually, I was on the Monterey Planning Commission 35 years ago. We made one of the first granny unit ordinances. And I have to say, when I look at the requirements for the ADUs here in Bellingham, there's been a lot of progress in 35 years, and I really appreciate a lot of the things that are set up to protect the neighborhood and to make sure that these ADUs don't have adverse impacts. At the same time, we still have these other things that need to be taken care of, which I know isn't really about the ADU ordinance, but it is in many ways, because putting more legal ADUs in the neighborhood does not resolve the issue of the density and the problems of the illegal units. Thank you for all your work on this, because I know this is a big project. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name's Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street here in Bellingham. And I knew you would be disappointed if I didn't say anything, so I do have two items I would like to bring up. One has to do with the owner occupancy. I think we need to take a look at whether or not the owner, let's say it's an older couple, live in the big house, and they rent out the ADU, the detached ADU, and then at some point, they decide that they don't want to clean the big house anymore, and they move into the ADU. And then you have a three, four, or five-bedroom home, which was occupied by two people, and suddenly there's four, five, six, seven, eight people in there. Quite a different dynamic with respect to infill. Like it or not, I think we need to have a discussion about that. I know it's very sensitive in some areas, especially with the students who join up together to reduce their rent. So I would caution the city on just allowing in either place, because there is a different dynamic. Secondly, with respect to complaints, it's very difficult when you live in a neighborhood, as you all know, to complain about your neighbor to the city. If somebody has an illegal ADU, that's a code violation, and there's a form that you have to fill out when you complain about a code violation. And that form in there indicates that you will, if taken to court, you will be willing to follow up and go to court when it's taken up. And this is a huge block to people to complain, not only because it's their neighbor, but then you have to go on record, you have to possibly appear in a court of law. It's a daunting process. I don't know what can be done that can ameliorate that, but I certainly think that that needs to be taken a look at. Otherwise, you're not going to get people coming forward. Anybody can give you a list right now of all these illegal ADUs, and I don't think the city can do much more than go over and shake their head and say, "Yeah." So there's no complaint, we can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
My name is Doug Allen. I'm at 2950 McLeod Road in the Birchwood neighborhood. So I just wanted to say that in regards to the ordinance, that as it gets updated, I think it's important to keep the owner-occupied provision in the ordinance. I think it's important to keep the parking provisions in the ordinance. I think it's important that we do not allow grandfathering. We're on the 1995, it's already been grandfathered. I think we need to get all the ADUs registered so that somebody knows where they are and who they are, somewhere there's, it's being kept track of. And then we need to do the compliance, and it's really disturbing to hear what the gentleman before me said, that there's not really much the city can do to somebody with an ADU. I don't know the law, I don't know the ordinance, but as far as I'm concerned, if we can't do the compliance, the ordinances are worthless. And that means funding compliance. So we got to fund the compliance, and then we got to go do the compliance, and that's the hard stuff. But if we don't do it, there's no point in having the laws. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi. Thanks for your patience. I was really glad to see our new planning director come out with an article titled, excuse me, Louise Bjornson. I was really glad to see the title, the planning director came out with the article, "Preserving Bellingham's Unique Sense of Place." I think that's a real nice introduction for him. And I'm just hoping that everybody remembers that. I hope this applies to the neighborhoods also. Our unique neighborhoods are very important to us. I am concerned about the future quality of life in our neighborhoods, especially in our existing older neighborhoods who do not have covenants to protect them. I come from the Birchwood neighborhood, the historic Victory Garden neighborhood. Our narrow lots have served to feed our neighborhood for generations, but now, just as locally grown food is becoming more important, now I hear about the move to put houses in people's backyards. That would be a huge change to our neighborhoods. Remember, as Harriet Spinell pointed out, the 1995 addition to the Growth Management Act titled, "Providing for the Preservation of Single Family Residential Neighborhoods," that cities must include provisions to ensure the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods. It's very important to all of us. I was on the city council, and some in Olympia wanted us to add the ADUs, so I got to go through this long process back in the '90s. So we tried to do it with as little impact to the neighborhoods as possible. We had a lot of comments from people who had moved here from other communities, along with lots of pictures of the negative impacts that went along with the detached ADUs. They felt it was like an in-run around the single-family zoning. So the present ADU ordinance does not allow detached ADUs, and I think it's more appropriate with only just... with only just attached. Attached ADUs, which are allowed now are part of the original house, are better environmental choice. First of all, they are part of the original house. Instead of building four new walls, they're attached. They now not take as much garden or green space. They do not have as much shade impact on the neighboring property. Attached ADUs are less invasive in a neighborhood and less impact on the privacy of the neighbors, have less impervious surface, less driveway space, less stormwater runoff. They have to be small and owner-occupied, as we put in our ordinance. There's a big difference in the impacts between attached and detached ADUs. Birchwood is a neighborhood with over 5,000 people, without a share of parks or public open space, with a very high percentage of children applying for free and reduced lunches at the school. Birchwood is 67% of the children qualify for free and reduced lunches. Cordada is 64%. Alderwood is 82%. And Birchwood already has West Maplewood on top of all this. We have diversity, but not economic diversity. The biggest attraction and quality of life in our neighborhood is the backyards, long ago planted for Victory Gardens. Growing our own food will be even more important in the future. Please don't take away the green space we have left. Once that soil is paved over, it's gone forever. Our neighborhoods have value. Please protect them. And remember that, that impacts that detached ADUs have in our neighborhoods. Thank you. And I have a copy of that bill that Harriet mentioned. You can have a copy.
Thank you, Louise. Thank you.
I'm Jack Weiss. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. And I had two, two things I wanted to talk about. One is just to inform the, the commission that the comments about enforcement are valid, and I think, you know, it, it has been known about for quite a while. Last fall, during our budget deliberations on the city council, of which I'm a member of, we, we did approve unanimously to go and double our code enforcement force from one person to two people. And by doing that, you know, it was in anticipation of the rental ordinance, the Rental Safety Program ordinance, knowing that we would have additional illegal units come forward through complaint or by discovery. And by having that, that additional person there, I mean, a lot of it is dealt with by the planning staff as far as code enforcement. But when it gets to the real heavy-duty, you know, you've got to really crack down on them, that's when the police department and their code enforcement officers are the ones that actually, you know, really crack down. But much of the work actually is done by our planning staff. So we do have, you know, we do have the ability of doing it. I think that Dick Conneboy's comment is valid about the, you know, the concern about complaining on your neighbor, and we, you know, we will have to go and come up with a better way of dealing with that. But I just wanted to let you know that, that there is money that has been budgeted to, to double that, and they're in the process of getting somebody hired and training them, and then doing the necessary mentoring work for them. The second issue that I wanted to talk to you about is that about two or three meetings ago, council meetings ago, we, we talked about some of these issues ourselves. And one thing that I, I had asked the council in our planning committee about, I'm the chair of the council's planning committee, and I had suggested to the, to the other committee members whether or not they'd be willing to have a joint meeting with you to talk about this issue. And so I'm, I'm here to extend an invitation to you that if we can work out some sort of timing, to have the three-member planning committee of the council meet with you to further talk about, about these issues, and so that we can kind of go at this at a, you know, with a consensus approach. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, that sounds like a really good idea. Okay, so I think, I think Jack's comment was the last comment, unless anyone else wants to come up. Would you, okay. I spoke too soon? Come on down.
My name's Mona Leishner. I live in the Cornwall Park neighborhood. I just have a couple of comments about this ADU issue. It sounds like a lot of people are feeling like the elephant in the room are the illegal units, and I appreciate that, and have concerns about that as well. But the issue I would also bring to you is when you are a citizen in the city trying to permit a legal ADU and be transparent both with the city planning department, the neighbors in the neighborhood, have a neighborhood meeting with your neighbors when it's not required, neighbors are quite unconcerned about it, trying to develop it per code with the city, follow the rules, have the reassessment, pay, I'm sure, the additional taxes to the city, pretty much trying to do what, everything by the book, and you're denied. And the city cannot provide you code as to why you're denied. We've met the code. We've worked with a very good designer who has a very good reputation. We came into the city, just like the website recommends, right at the beginning, all through the planning stage, being transparent, having that discussion. And it comes down to the wire after a lot of resources are spent with your designer, the green light's going, only to find at the final hour at the neighborhood meeting that the city doesn't like part of the design. You question the code and what's wrong with the design. They just don't like it. And the unfortunate thing in our situation is that only suggestion, and the city is careful certainly to not tell us how we have to design it, but really, the only solution that they could see to approve it as an ADU would be horrific as far as fitting into the historical neighborhood. It would not make sense on the particular lot. I'm sure the neighbors would not like it. They wouldn't like it. It made no sense. So we pulled the plug and stopped. So when people out in the community are hearing that that's kind of the experience, and I think we're not probably the only ones, you know, it sort of sends a message out about, okay, well, do we just rent this thing and do it illegally? We don't want to do that. We're not going to do that. But that's a frustration. So I think that really needs to be looked at. I think following the rules, but looking at what makes sense for the particular parcel as well. Common sense. The one thing I would urge everybody to look at, if you have an all ready, and I don't know if it's in the packet, is the website, accessorydwellings.org. There's a lot of good information there. And if you look at Portland, which I think is probably the most progressive with their ADU permitting, I mean, no parking spaces required, detached, attached, as a matter of fact, Portland has in the past, I don't know, a year or two, through 2016, they are actually waiving the fees for applying for ADU units. I mean, that's pretty crazy. They're waiving the fees. And if you look at, since Portland has allowed ADU units, they're not being developed that much. And they are the most liberal. They are, you know, no parking stall is required, detached, attached, and they're still, it's not ruining their city. They're not ruining their city. They are not overwhelming the neighborhoods into multifamily dwellings. They're not. And on that accessorydwellings.org website, there have not been lots and lots of studies about ADUs. Of course, they're recent, in the past 20 or 30 years. I don't know, you know, I'm not that well-versed on it.
About 30 seconds.
But what I did, thank you, what I did read is they have done a more recent study in the last couple of years and surveyed ADU owners. And for me, as an ADU owner, if I could ever be, I would be certainly very particular about who is living in the unit on my parcel and sharing that space with me. Clearly. So anyway, I, it's unfortunate that all the illegals are there. I have some understanding as to why at this point, but accessorydwellings.org has a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think that might be the last comment. I don't see anyone else coming down. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of the public meeting, and I appreciate all the comments. There was a lot of good information, a lot of people who came to speak, so we really appreciate hearing from you. And I think that at this point, we can have a discussion if we'd like. We could ask questions of staff. I'd like to go around and just allow each commissioner to maybe ask a question if they have one that they've been thinking about, and then once we get through everybody, if there's more discussion to be had, we could, we could just open it up, you know, kind of, how people want to. So is there anyone who'd like to start? Anybody? Phyllis?
Actually, after I was listening to a lot of people talk about if they had an accessory dwelling unit, that they would be very particular about the people that they would rent to, all sounds well and good, until someone decides you're discriminating. I'd be very curious to know what the backside of that coin will be, because there are a lot of things you can't, you cannot determine who you rent to by specific standards, and so I'd be very curious to see how, and it just popped into my mind when I was listening to all this, and I thought that comment thread will be interesting. Thank you.
Tom? Anything in particular?
Why is there error? No, the enforcement thing is, is going to be a real bugaboo. I mean, what will be the, the final enforcement? We burn down the thing, you know, if it's illegal, and, and we've gone through everything, and it goes to the courts, and the courts say, "Burn it down"? I, you know, we got to look at, we don't have to. We, we should think about the, the long-range implications of, of this stuff that we're going to be codifying.
Thank you.
Well, I just, first of all, I'd like to say, we've heard some really good comments here this evening. I, I think we've heard a couple sides of, of the issue, and we're weighing, this is an important ordinance, and we're looking at a lot of impacts on neighborhoods. This is a big one, and I just am encouraged by the comment that we heard and, and the different perspectives that are being weighed in here. Obviously, we're going to dig into this pretty deep. Enforcement's a huge issue, so I think that's, you know, where, where my mind's at to start, to get some more information from city staff. But yeah, this has been very informative.
Thanks. Steve?
First of all, I had some great written comments that came in tonight and previous to this. Sincerely thank everybody. Looks like we're split right now, from what I heard tonight. We've had comments on both sides. But my feeling, my initial feeling is that we have to identify the problem, how many illegals we've got out there. And then the question is, what do we do now? How do we move forward? I find it a little hard to believe that we would start working on a new ordinance, and we have a big problem out there first. So that, that's, that's the first thing that comes to my mind. I've written down a whole lot of questions. Oh, one other thing, I'd like to thank Councilman Weiss for his offer to get together. I, I think that's a, that's a great idea and discuss. First one I've heard since I've been here, to come on down and meet us, meet with us. That's, that's great, Jack. I appreciate it. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Okay. Reese, anything?
Yeah, I would definitely echo what the commissioners have said so far. I really appreciate everyone coming and taking their time for speaking, but also the written comment, and it seems to me that, you know, it is a big issue, and there are pros and cons, enforcement and the illegal part, but I also think we need to really focus on smart planning and how to make this work for us, because I think there's a lot of benefits, too. So trying to find the balance with all of that. Mona, I think, was the last woman that spoke, and I, I was caught by what you said, because I've had a lot of clients who have also complained of that same type of obstacle. So they tried to do the right thing, and then they can't get it done, and so then, you know, and then we have this problem with the, the illegal part. So I, I don't know, I feel like there's some, I really appreciate you bringing that up, because I think it's the other side to some of this stuff. So finding a way to make it work for people that want to do it correctly, and then obviously police the people who aren't doing it correctly. But the enforcement is going to be an interesting issue for us to figure out how to solve. But I, yeah, I appreciate starting this conversation.
Anything, Jeff?
I thought I was just supposed to ask a question, so I figured I'd give it a pass before I started spouting opinions.
You can pass.
No, I have, I have a lot to say. I'd like to start out, you know, by noting that Phyllis and I were, were both at that focus group and had some input in that list, and I won't, I'll leave it at that. So moving beyond that, the thing that strikes me is that we have a problem where we have, we're trying to discuss what should be, and we're kind of stumbling over what is. And I guess the question I have for staff is, what do we do about what is? And, and I have a fairly educated knowledge of what's around the city. I've done a lot of poking around, and I would guess there's, there's certainly probably around 500 ADUs poking around out there, and nobody wants to put a number on it, but, you know, I've done a lot of avalleys in my previous job, and I've poked around. There's a big number out there. So what we really need to talk about, in my opinion, is, you know, what is the rental registration going to capture? Many of those ADUs, in my opinion, looking at the, the sheet that went along on the council agenda about what the checklist was going to be, are not going to pass. It's not just a matter of even looking for amnesty, even, you know, I don't even think that's an issue. I think they're going to have headroom problems, electrical problems, plumbing problems, you know, they're not going to pass. So people are going to be evicted. You know, we better start talking about the reality here, that you're going to talk about shrinking housing, you're going to be talking about a big transition here. My point here is that until you talk about that honestly, you know, maybe it will be that the eventual planning target for what should be might be about the same number of ADUs, but we can't even talk about that until we figure out what's going on out there currently and what you're actually going to do about those. So I've heard a number of things that it's complaint-driven, you know, so either somebody has to actually come up and complain about something or not complain about something, otherwise the ADU keeps on going under the radar unless rental registration catches them. But I guess what would help us, or at least me, is to have a fairly specific outline of what your intentions are for enforcing, and at what point does somebody actually get evicted? You know, you get it red-tagged, you get it shut down, code violation, and what happens to the tenant, and what happens to the landlord in terms of fines or other enforcement activities? Because that's what's going to drive the shrinkage in illegally to use, and that's what's going to be the starting point for what we want to talk about, about what neighborhoods can absorb if this goes forward, as we think it will, so we can have the discussion about what should be. So I'd really like to get a little bit more clarity about what the plan is from getting from here to there. And the second point I'd like to make is, I'd really like to hear from renters. We've heard a lot from neighborhood associations that are predominantly homeowners. We've heard a lot from various levels of public input, but I'd like to see the outreach for people that are community members, long-term community members that happen to rent instead of owning their own homes, that are stable people, that have jobs in town, that are potentially renting right now, and this will affect them. So I hope that in the outreach for this, that there's an attempt to reach all stakeholders and inform them of the implications of this, and let them have a voice.
Thanks, Jeff. Those are all very good comments, and I, I think I concur with a lot of the statements that have been made by, by the commission. have been made by the commission. I see, Jeff, the issue that you brought up of what is and what we're doing is the big issue. And, you know, Sirice, you noted, everyone's focused on enforcement and the illegals. And do we do one before the other? And which one goes first? Having absorbed the comment and read the public comment and thought a lot about this as well, driven a lot of alleys, I think it's almost impossible to do one or the other first. The discussion has to happen at the same time because there's this great risk that Jeff noted of displacing a large number of people if we just go and enforce on everybody without a program in place to deal with each of those units based on their site-specific characteristics. So I'm hoping that we get some feedback from staff through this process that we're just starting, you know, and on how the ordinance that's being proposed is going to incorporate enforcement mechanisms, like Jeff noted. And I hope that the ordinance includes both, that element, how we're going to deal with the illegals that we have today, how we're going to legalize some of them, maybe, if we choose to allow ADUs, and then also what standards we're going to implement moving forward with new applications or, you know, people who are trying to make an illegal legal if we get there. I think it should all be part of one discussion. And I also would echo the comments that one speaker made, and I apologize, I can't remember, regarding us having a lot going on right now with the subdivision ordinance and the critical areas ordinance and the complaint update and this, and they're all happening at the same time. And I would say the same thing about all of that. Those are all interrelated, and we can't pick one before the other one. So I think it's really actually good that we're having all these discussions at once because they're all interrelated and we're learning from the public and from staff about all of them. And for me personally, it helps me to formulate my understanding of each issue better. So I like that we're working through all this at the same time. I know it's a lot, and we're going to move slowly, as I understand it, from staff. But it's important for us to talk about all these things at once. So that's my initial thought. We can definitely have more discussion about it. If there's specific questions for staff about how we're going to move forward, we could pose those. Anybody? Jeff, yeah?
I looked at the timeline, and I noticed this is coming back here fairly soon. And I guess if there's going to be a joint council meeting or subcommittee, council subcommittee meeting on planning commission, that's not in the schedule. And is that going to inform, is that going to happen before our next discussion, before this April-May, or is that going to happen in concurrence? Or is the schedule going to get stretched? I'd kind of like to hear how that all works.
I think that's a good question. I don't think any of the seven of us have had an experience with that, so we can't really speak to how that would play out. Maybe Greg, if you have any ideas?
Well, you know, the schedule is very tentative, and we'll have as many meetings as you feel like you need to have to address the issues. I think it's a great idea to meet with the council. We've done that in the past, but it's been a while. And we've always found those to be very valuable meetings. So we'll approach the council and approach all of you and figure out a date when we can do that. You know, it sort of depends on when you want to do it. Do you want to do it at this stage of the process? Or do you want to do it when we're a little further along, maybe when we're looking at an actual ordinance with changes? When would it be most helpful for you to have that discussion with the council?
I'd go sooner than later because I think we're scoping right now. And it would be a real shame to get knee-deep in an ordinance before we've even had a chance to talk about the scope of what we're trying to achieve, would be my opinion.
Phyllis?
I'll second that.
Sorry, Tom, yeah?
Yeah, I think so, too. And it doesn't mean that we just have one meeting. I mean, I'm assuming that there could be, if we thought there needed to be more, there could be.
There could be.
Could be. But one thing I also wanted to mention that just sort of popped to mind is, I'd be, and this is kind of a rhetorical question, but how many property owners who have illegal dwellings, accessory dwellings, are counting on the income to pay their mortgage? And if we get rid of that mortgage payment, that extra income, then is there going to be a chance of default on the underlying mortgage? I mean, I'm just thinking of all the ripple effects that can happen. So every decision that we make, I think, has consequences that we need to be paying attention to.
Steve?
I'd like to see, obviously, an agenda worked out with city council because this is vast. I'd hate to go in and just start throwing darts at the wall and not get anything done, not target anything done. I had another comment, but it slipped my mind. That's it for now.
I'd just like to clarify one thing for the public who might have been listening. There were comments about enforcement, complaint-driven enforcement for illegal ADUs. And then there were also comments about registering rentals. And I think it's important to clarify that we don't have a requirement, and we haven't had a requirement for someone who is renting a unit to register that. So if you live next door to someone who's renting, there's no code or rule that says that they have to report to the city and identify themselves as a renter or that the landlord has to do that. That's something that I believe is being implemented now through this rental registration. Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But so, you know, that, those are two separate distinct issues, and it should be clear to everybody that enforcement on illegal accessory dwellings is wholly different than living next door to a renter or owning a rental property. That'll be changing with this rental registration, but in the past and up to this point, that is the case. Just to clarify.
Light went on. I would like to ask staff, how do we go forward right now with all the various comments from our speakers tonight and from all the written comments? I mean, they really cover a full gamut of what we have to discuss. Are you thinking about a tracker to put out? Or are you going to address certain letters and respond?
Yeah, no, I think a tracker is the way to go with these kinds of projects. It lets people see that their comments were received and we can provide a response. So yeah, that's the way to go. And everything that we get goes on the website. So when people submit their letters, it goes on the website. All of the information tonight, as Chris said, goes on the website. For anyone who couldn't make it tonight but wants to comment, we're always accepting written comments. If you're a renter out there, if you live in an ADU and you want to get your thoughts to us but you can't come to a meeting, send us your thoughts in an email. We'll provide those to the commission and put them on the website as well.
One last thing in regards to the discussion with the council. Just kind of thinking out loud, but maybe it would be appropriate to have staff be a point of interface since you guys are working with the council calendar and for the long-range planning and also ours. And we could communicate with the planning subcommittee chair, maybe, I don't know if that's Jack or somebody else, and just work through you guys to figure out a calendar time for us to meet.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that, we don't typically take comments from the public after the public meetings.
Question.
It's a question?
Go ahead. Timeline. Jeff mentioned something about May. Do you have a timeline?
No, we don't. We have a few meetings scheduled, but we don't have a timeline to bring forward an ordinance or to have final public hearings or anything like that. We're remaining flexible at this point.
So the question was, is there a set timeline? And the answer was that, no, not at this stage. We'll be moving forward with, kind of, I guess, developing this as we go a little bit. So I think with that, we'll close the public meeting element of tonight's meeting. And really, again, appreciate everyone coming out and making comment. I think the other commissioners were absolutely right. We got a lot of very good information and opinion from a pretty diverse selection of our neighborhoods. So it was really great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Greg, I'm going to wait one minute for everybody to get out of here.
Do you have like five minutes for an interview? Western break, you guys still have session. Okay, I think, great, thank you.
We can do it after.
Okay. Or could I ask you?
This is for the ADU?
This is for the Western.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll get going. So at this point, we've got no other items. If there's any director's report or new business you want to discuss, Greg?
I just want to point out that your next meeting is on March 19th, and we'll be holding a public hearing to consider amendments to the Samish neighborhood plan.
Hey, Greg, just one second. Excuse me, everybody. Could I please ask you to take your discussions into the hallway? Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, we'll try again. March 19th is your next meeting. We'll be discussing, we'll be holding a public hearing to consider amendments to the Samish neighborhood plan for a rezone in Area 1 from commercial to, commercial auto to commercial plan. You could have done that announcement better than I did, probably.
Yep, that's true. Okay, well, that's it. So I'm just kidding. Okay, I think that's it, so I think we'll adjourn. Thank you, everybody.